Good evening, everyone. Out of the public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on January 29, 2020 to Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Bayard Street. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Here. Thank you. If everyone will please stand for the flag salute.
Ready salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the singer of the Black National Anthem. Lift every voice and sing in honor of Black History Month.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it ring out loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us for joy till victory is won. Stoney the road we trod, bitter the chastening cry. Felt in the days when hope upbore and died. Yet with the setting me and not a weary feet. Come to the place for which our people sign. We have come over a way that with tears hath been watered. We have come treading our path through the blood of the soil. Out from the gloomy past till now we stand at last. Where the white wheat of our rich story is cast. Let us for joy till victory is won.
Thank you so much, students. That was a beautiful experience. This is a reminder that the public hearing on the budget will be held on Tuesday, March 24th, beginning at 6:00 PM here at the New Brunswick High School Auditorium. The regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 24th, beginning at 7:00 PM. I'm sorry. I'll correct myself. The preliminary budget meeting to approve the submission of the preliminary 2020-2021 budget will be held here at the New Brunswick High School on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, beginning at 6:00 PM. We'll move on to item number three, the presentations. The first presentation is from the George Street Playhouse. Thank you, Ms. Kuzza.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. The New Brunswick Public Schools' longstanding partnership with George Street Playhouse continues to provide our students with opportunities to explore content through the arts while addressing the positive aspects of social-emotional learning. Tonight, I would like to introduce Mr. Jim Jack, Director of Education and Outreach for George Street, to highlight his important work with our district. Mr. Jack?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Jack. I want to thank Ms. Kuzza for that introduction. And also, I want to thank the New Brunswick Public Schools Board of Education, Superintendent Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Kuzza, Ms. Lee Niemann, who's been with us for many years, Ms. Darla Diaz, who just started as the new supervisor for fine visual performing arts. Tonight, we're going to share with you a report about last year's academic year with working with George Street. And so, I also want to extend that welcome to all of the principals we work with in the many schools, the extraordinary teachers and administrators, the beautiful students who are our reason for being there, and their families who are with us this evening. So keep yourselves a big round of applause. This year, we celebrate 10 years of partnership with New Brunswick Public Schools. Starting very modestly in Paul Robeson and Lord Sterling in eight classrooms, working in third grade. 10 years ago, we are now working in over 90 classrooms, reaching over 1,700 students, and doing work that I think really exemplifies the most exceptional pieces of what arts integration looks like. So, one of the things we're going to talk a little bit about is some of the residency programs we offer. So, our artists go into classrooms to elevate content to increase academic achievement. Social-emotional learning, collaborative skills, and creative thinking. We have three primary programs. One is called Theater at the Core, and we're in 73 classrooms with that. We just finished up Drama Across the Curriculum at Lincoln Annex, which was really wonderful. That program is funded by Bank of America. And then, we have the Ensemble Project, which I'm going to talk a little bit about in a moment. That's been at Lincoln Annex for 10 years as well. The work really focuses around collaboration and providing students an opportunity to work together to solve creative problems. Each residency has expensive professional development for staff, as well as, this is also connected with the Civic League's Ensemble After School Program, which we are in Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts, Lord Sterling, and we just started this year in Red Shaw. We work in many different areas of curricular understanding. Students really gain background knowledge and thematic insights into sometimes very difficult content. We primarily work in social studies, science, English language arts, and social-emotional development, but look at everything from immigration to earth formations, comparison and contrasting, expressive language development, and all these different types of cross-curricular opportunities where science partners with English, social studies partners with science, to tell some really exceptional stories. A few of the ones last year that we thought were really powerful was the First Amendment with figurative language, looking at science of the Earth's crust and cause-effect relationships, Greek mythology and the American government, what is those relationships? And Native American mythology and geography around natural resources, in particular, the water cycle. One of the programs I want to just touch on briefly is the Ensemble Project. This has been at Lincoln Annex for 10 years and really is our longest-running program. An artist, two artists come into the classroom for 32 sessions with the entire fourth grade, and they create an original musical. And last year, it was focused around a row of children. This process, the students write the music, they research the subject matter, they create the story, they write all the dialogue, they help design it, and then they perform it. And the few years before we were, we transitioned to our beautiful new building at New Brunswick Park, we had had the students come down to George Street to perform that show. But in the two years where we've been in transition at our place in College Farm Road, we've been performing it up at Lincoln Annex. This year, on June 5th, we welcome all of you to join us for a performance of the fourth grade at the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center in the Lawrence Theater, entirely free for the community, to see the extraordinary artistry of these fourth-grade students. So we hope you can join us then. The other work that we've been doing for 10 years is Ensemble After School. This is a program that works in concert with the Civic League of Greater New Brunswick. Dr. Epps had this vision about how to anchor the arts with some of the programs around leadership that he fosters in that program with his team. And so, last year, we did a really wonderful piece of theater. We created an original musical about the life of Paul Robeson to open with the gala of the new Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts. One of the stars of that show is with us this evening, Mr. DeAndre Robinson. He was extraordinary, played Paul Robeson in the show, and his passion and convictiveness about that story was based upon Paul Robeson's autobiography, Here I Stand. And they told, the final number was called Here We Stand. It was united student voices about what the lessons of this extraordinary man, this scholar, this athlete, this social activist, this humanitarian, and this great artist, what lessons can we take away from that? And how do we bring that into our future? And DeAndre embodied those along with the rest of this ensemble. What we feel also so powerful as part of our process that's comprehensive is we offer scholarships to students to attend our summer theater academy because of the generous donations of the Rutgers Community Health Foundation. Each year, we offer over 25 students the opportunity to come to George Street from New Brunswick Public Schools to study free of charge for two to four weeks and create theater amongst their peers. These are full-day experiences, and the students do extraordinary work. And what we do is we lean upon our amazing teachers to nominate students in the program. And so, each grade gets to nominate two students in each of the schools we work at. And here are some of the students from Lincoln Annex, Lord Sterling Community School, McKinley, Paul Robeson Community School for the Arts. There's DeAndre again. He is paying for a career as a professional artist, I think. I might be biased. Red Shaw, Roosevelt, and Woodrow Robinson. What we want to talk with you a little bit about tonight is give you a little insight into our core program Theater at the Core. And that is the program where we have 10 sessions with teaching artists in the classroom. And we feel very blessed tonight to work with one of the best teachers in New Brunswick Public Schools, Caitlin Davis. And her teaching artist last year, Miss Rachel Matusiewicz. And Krista Solerato, who is our Assistant Director of Education, is going to guide that conversation for you all.
A little bit about what happened in Paul Robeson's sixth grade last year. Ooh, there we are. Good evening, everyone. As you mentioned, my name is Krista Solerato. I'm the Assistant Director of Education at George Street Playhouse. And last year, for the third year in a row, we had the privilege of working with Caitlin Davis and her sixth graders. And we were able to do a residency focused on mythology, where students created pieces of epic poetry involving original music, movement, choreography, and the poems that they wrote themselves. This was rooted in understanding point-of-view, logic and reasoning skills, and why characters make the decisions that they make, and what in the text helps us understand and justify their choices. Caitlin, why did you choose mythology and epic poetry as a way to teach students these skills?
Greek mythology is a very heavy subject, and there's a whole... We were reading Percy Jackson's The Lion and the Thief last year, and there are a million and a half characters that kids have to keep track of. There's a lot going on. So, I think that it was a really good idea to focus on specific characters. And Rachel and Angela did a phenomenal job finding the perfect text to introduce three, what's the word? Three characters that are in the novel and that were used throughout Greek mythology. And the kids were very interested. And it was just a wonderful way to incorporate all of them. And you chose, you found three different points of view and perspectives. And it was just everything that we needed to touch on, that we were trying to figure out how to make this easier because it's so heavy and so hefty. And we did it.
I think I love how often you use the word "we." Core part of our focus at George Street Playhouse is a co-teaching model. And that's from the very beginning. We bring classroom teachers like Caitlin and teaching artists like Rachel together before we even set foot in the classroom with students to do planning meetings before the residency begins, to have these conversations about curriculum, about learning outcomes, about what the goals are, what we want to achieve, in the 10 hours that we have with them. Rachel, can you speak to the co-teaching model as a teaching artist? And what were some of the decisions you guys made together? And how does that work?
Absolutely. Oh, I'm glad it's working. So, like Krista said, the co-teaching model starts before the residency even begins. When we meet and we discuss what the curricular goals of the residency are. Because our programming isn't just to form better artists, but better students as well. Bringing home, like Caitlin said, some more difficult topics that sometimes need a little bit of heightening through emotional and personal experience, like through doing theater. So, we meet very early on in the process to talk, what do you want your students to get out of this process? What do you want them to learn curricularly? Where do they need the most help? And that can be in something like understanding points of view. It can also be in understanding the Earth's surface or understanding creative writing. So, those are all things that we look at with the classroom teacher. And then, when we get in the room, it's especially important to work with the classroom teacher who knows their students the best. And like Jim said, we were particularly blessed to work with Caitlin, who has such an investment and a stake in her students' success, that she wants them to learn and she wants them to get the most out of whatever they're doing in that very moment. So, that is so valuable to us as teaching artists. The magic really happens when every student is involved in the classroom, when everyone is coming together to make a project happen that really strengthens that learning. And when you have a classroom teacher like Ms. Caitlin Davis, who is invested in that as well, the fireworks of theater happen. And everyone learns that everyone comes out stronger and more theatrically and socially engaged.
I wonder if both of you could speak a little bit about the specific teaching strategies you use to get that level of engagement, to deepen that student learning? What are some specific strategies you use? And how effective were they?
Well, we have a variety of learners last year in the sixth grade. And they, we had a lot of dancers. We had a lot of students who loved to sing, students who didn't want to do anything, but they just wanted to write. And that was fine. And so, we really worked together to cater to all of the different student learning styles and give them a choice. And giving them that choice, I think you would agree with me, that it was, made such an impact on the way that they just went about the entire process. And it was really engaging and it was really just exciting for them. They wanted to come in and work with the instruments. They wanted to come in and choreograph a dance that was 30 seconds long. They got to do it and perform in front of everyone. And it really showed how invested the students were and how willing they were to work with us and each other and collaborate by giving them that choice. So, I think that was really, really helpful.
Yeah, I 100% agree. I was going to say the same thing. We allowed them that choice and that agency. Another tactic we use as teachers and co-teachers is expressive modeling. So, you have someone like myself come in as an artistic expert in a room, someone like Caitlin, who is the literary teacher expert in a room. You show them how to do something, and then we say, now it's your turn. And especially when we give them that agency and choice of now you're musicians or now you are going to choreograph this moment. They, it really does. It strengthens their ownership of whatever piece they're doing. And when they own it, they retain it. So, whatever that curricular goal still sticks heavy. And they also come out proud of what they've been doing.
Unfortunately, DeAndre was willing to join us this evening so that we could give his voice to that experience.
Sorry, this was a mistake. This is all, this is all... DeAndre? Last year was her fourth year with an in-school residency with George Street. What was it like having teaching artists like our wonderful Ms. Rachel come into the class with you and your classmates in school?
Well, something that I thought was really fun was how we learned and we had fun at the same time because we were like dancing and singing. And I think it was all fun because we took knowledge that we already knew and other new ideas and it made into our original story.
Awesome. You've also participated in the Ensemble After School and the summer program. Why do you keep choosing to participate in all of these amazing things with George Street? Why is it so meaningful to you?
Well, the reason why I think it was meaningful for me to choose Ensemble After School and the summer program was because the people there all wanted to do theater, and they liked it just as much as I did. So, I wanted to join people who liked me. And it kind of helped me express myself.
Can you share us one way, share with us one way that you feel like you've grown?
Well, one thing that I picked up on was they taught us different strategies of how to incorporate what we were learning in school and what we were learning on in retreat. And basically, for example, when we were doing the Greek mythology, and there was a lot of characters and it was really complicated. But since we picked one by one each character, they kind of like magnified on that one character and really acted out that character. And it helped me learn like the different characters and really helped me.
Well, thank you. Be reserved for that time. This is a kind reminder to please not shout or ask any questions during this time because there will be a time for public comments later. No voy a repetir en español. Este es un recordatorio que cualquiera persona que quiera hacer un comentario, por favor reservar su comentario o preguntas hasta la porción de la reunión donde esto se permite. Mientras tanto, vamos a seguir con la presentación. So, with that being said, if we could please have the presentation by Duffco and Robert Wood Johnson regarding the Lincoln Annex School.
President Solis, members of the board, Dr. Johnson, and most importantly, parents and students. February 7th, we provided Dr. Johnson and the board with a plan that we had hoped would facilitate the implementation for the redevelopment and the expansion of the Cancer Institute of New Jersey and provide for the construction of a state-of-the-art school for students in the city. I've been doing this a long time, and I can't believe that there has been a project that has the ability to be more transformative and impact the lives of more folks, not just in the city, but in the region and the state and potentially other parts of the country and the world. This project will afford the treatment of thousands of additional cancer patients in the state's only standalone cancer facility, attract 100 new researchers who are focused on the development of therapies and cures for cancer, create 500 to 600 new permanent jobs in New Brunswick, and create 1,000 construction jobs over the next four years. It also, and probably most importantly, certainly relevant tonight, will allow us to build a brand-new, state-of-the-art, modern school for the students of New Brunswick with no cost to either the school board or the taxpayers of New Brunswick. So, with your permission, I would like to introduce Dr. Labuti, who is the Director of the Rutgers Cancer Institute of New Jersey, to lay out his vision and what actually got this ball rolling. Dr. Labuti has another engagement this evening. So, if possible, if you have questions for him, if you could ask those questions after he's completed his component, I'll be back to talk about what we'd like to do going forward to be able to move a new school project forward. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Palladino. I want to thank the Board of Education and the leadership of the New Brunswick Public Schools for allowing me to be here this evening and talk a bit about the cancer program. I also want to thank the parents and the students that are here this evening. This project is especially meaningful to me because, as I imagine, there are many of you in the audience who either have a family member, a friend, or someone who's close to you that has suffered with a cancer diagnosis and has struggled with how to deal with that diagnosis. And for the students that are in the audience, to be able to imagine a program that will not only address what is an incredibly impactful disease that affects so many of us, but also for those students, build a brand-new, state-of-the-art school to replace a 60-year-old school that they are in right now, really, I think, is incredibly impactful, as Mr. Palladino said, not only for New Brunswick, but the greater community. So, I just want to start off, and I'm going to move quickly through these. As many of you are aware, New Jersey is a pretty special place. And it's a special place because we have a lot of people in a small area where the most densely populated state in the United States. And we're the fourth most ethnically diverse state in the United States. And that's incredibly important because that diversity brings with it a rich fabric and culture and unique challenges that we have to face, both from a healthcare perspective and an educational perspective. Unfortunately, we're fifth in cancer incidence in the United States, which means that there are only four states in the U.S. that have higher cancer rates than us. This is a significant public health problem for the citizens of our state. 50,000 new cancer cases a year in New Jersey, and 16,000 of our fellow citizens in the state are going to die of this disease. And there is no cancer hospital in the state of New Jersey focused entirely on the care of patients with cancer. Patients in New Jersey, if they want to gain the services of a focused cancer hospital, have to travel to New York or Philadelphia for that care. And many of our citizens, since we have a high percentage of folks in our state that live at or below the poverty line and have significant challenges, language barriers, challenges to access care, don't have that opportunity to travel into New York or Philadelphia to get that level of care. So, what we're proposing here is to bring that care to the people of New Jersey. We are the only comprehensive cancer center as designated by the National Cancer Institute in the state. And the care that we deliver is need-blind. So, we are not interested in, nor do we care about what insurance folks have. We figure out a way to care for any cancer patient that walks in our door. And so, our goal is to be able to care for patients at a level that is not present in the state right now. So, that is essentially our mission. Our mission is to be the state's resource and leader in cancer care, most importantly, but also cancer research and driving forward, answering questions, and coming up with the next generation of therapies to treat patients that right now, about a third of patients who receive a cancer diagnosis are going to die of that disease. And I have no doubt that many of the young people sitting in this audience right now will eventually be the thought leaders that come up with those next treatments and cures for patients with cancer. And that's one of our missions as well, to educate clinicians and the next generation of cancer researchers and cancer physicians. We have a number of cancer types that we treat. In fact, there isn't a cancer type that you would not find physicians and researchers focused on at the Cancer Institute. And these are just some of those multidisciplinary clinics. Our clinics are focused on the... Our clinics are focused on the patient. Patients that come to get care with us don't go from doctor to doctor, but all the doctors essentially come to the patient. It's a multidisciplinary program where it's essentially like a lazy Susan on your kitchen table. The patient is in the center and the doctors and nurses come around that patient. Any cancer type you can imagine is treated within our program. We're also very proud of a nurse navigation program that we've established. These are nurses who are focused on navigating a patient with a cancer diagnosis through every step of their cancer care. We have, as an institute and as a health system, invested in a model of a navigator per cancer patient. So every cancer patient essentially gets a nurse navigator to help them with their journey through their care. These navigators, by the way, are multilingual, and so language barriers are lowered for patients that are engaging with us for this care. We also provide education, not only in training the next generation, but for patients and physicians all throughout New Jersey through our virtual tumor boards and our telemedicine consultations. So at hospitals throughout the state, folks can get a consult from our experts without having to travel for that initial consultation. And if it looks like there's a level of care that they require, those folks then can make the trip to New Brunswick with a care plan. And so that's a program that we're very proud of. We're a partner with Princeton University, so you have the largest public university in the state, Rutgers, and the largest private university, Princeton, working together to battle this dreaded disease and to find the next cures that we can then apply to treat patients suffering from cancer in the state. And so the best minds of both Rutgers and Princeton are focused on making progress in new discovery. We work in partnership with the state and have a program called Screen NJ, which brings lung and colon cancer screening to patients all across New Jersey, again, need-blind. We provide funding to offset the cost of cancer screening, and we're expanding this now to other cancer types throughout the state. And so you can see the importance of driving these programs forward to try to reduce that burden of 50,000 new cases a year. Those 16,000 deaths that I referred to are essentially often the result of late detection of disease. And if we can detect disease earlier, we can save more of those patients with a cancer diagnosis. Screen NJ started in just four counties in 2018 and has expanded now to all 21 counties in the state of New Jersey. We have been growing exponentially in terms of the patients that we serve. In 2019, we saw 22,000 new cancer patient visits at the Cancer Institute and across our programs, and overall 186,000 patient visits. And so we are in need to expand in order to tackle this problem and make our services available to those patients in the state of New Jersey that desperately need that care. And so you'll hear more from Mr. Palladino and Devco about the plans, as I mentioned earlier, to create the first freestanding cancer hospital in the state of New Jersey. This hospital will serve inpatient needs, outpatient needs, be one-stop location for all cancer care. As I mentioned, it is need-blind. Patients can come in regardless of their ability to pay, insurance status, et cetera, and we will figure out how we care for those patients. It is in close proximity by necessity to the acute care hospital and to our current research building in order to make seamless the discovery of new therapies and their translation or bringing them to the patient's bedside. And that importance can't be overemphasized in terms of making progress. Importantly, in addition to the numbers of patients we see, we can make available new and cutting-edge therapies to patients in the state through our clinical trial program. And you can see between 2003 and 2017, the increase in the number of patients that we have been able to bring new cutting-edge clinical trials to. And again, having a state-of-the-art facility to expand even more the cutting-edge research discoveries we can bring to the patients in New Jersey is incredibly important. We are partners with and collaborate with the other Big Ten universities across the U.S. and what that means in terms of cancer care. Our clinical trials developed in Indiana, or Iowa, or Michigan, or Wisconsin can be seamlessly brought to the patients here in New Jersey because this cooperative consortia shares clinical trials and discoveries across all of the Big Ten universities. So patients here in New Brunswick can get the benefit of cutting-edge therapies that are being developed across the country through our Big Ten partners. Training, as I mentioned, is incredibly important to us, and so we have a number of partnerships with high school students throughout New Brunswick and across the country. We train summer students in the laboratories within the Cancer Institute. And many of the investigators of tomorrow, we hope, are learning about the challenges of beating cancer and coming up with new strategies to do so at the Cancer Institute. We train undergraduate students as well in our laboratories, as well as pre-doctoral trainees and then postgraduate trainees, the next generation of doctors to take on this battle. And so I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you a bit about the importance of the problem of cancer for our state, certainly within our county and within New Brunswick, and how we at the Cancer Institute want to serve our population more effectively to try to beat cancer in our lifetime. So thank you again for your attention. If there are any questions from the board about the project, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions? Not at this time. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you for the privilege of talking.
As Dr. Labuti had indicated, this will be the only freestanding National Cancer Institute-designated comprehensive care center in the state of New Jersey. What makes this different than other facilities in New Jersey, not only the NCI designation, but Dr. Labuti, other researchers, and members of his team visited what they saw as their peer institutions around the country at Yale, Harvard, at Ohio State, at Michigan, and really came to the conclusion that creating a vertically-integrated facility where patients could come for diagnosis, for outpatient treatment, for chemotherapy, for radiation therapy, but also for inpatient visits. There's 11 procedure rooms, seven of them are operating rooms, and there's 98 critical care beds in this building, so that they could take care of all of the patients' needs in one facility. It's imperative that this building be connected to the hospital's infrastructure. So in both the east side and the west side, there are bridges that connect to the hospital and to the existing cancer research facility. And the site of the Lincoln Annex is really critical to us being able to accomplish this. So that 510,000 square foot building, it costs approximately $760 million to build. It'll take us three years to build it. It'll have its own parking garage. Not only will we have treatment, but as I said earlier, 10 investigative teams, who Dr. Labuti is now recruiting from around the world, who will bring researchers to work on new therapies and new cures. Something that's really important, not only to actually the success of the project, but I think to the city, certainly to the school board, is that we're going to create 500 to 600 new jobs when this project is finished. And that runs the gamut, from oncologists to surgeons to nurses, to x-ray technicians, to lab technicians, to material managers, people who work in the kitchen, housekeepers, security administration. So what we are putting together is the most robust job readiness program that we think has been put together in the state. We've created a partnership with Robert Wood Johnson, excuse me, Robert Wood Johnson Bartovus Health System, Rutgers Cancer Institute, Middlesex County, Middlesex County College. We're going to do this with New Brunswick High School, Vocational School, the P-Tech Program, and the Health Science Pro School. To be able to get students today, and think about it, they're 13, 14 years old when this building is going to open, is to, A, orient them to the opportunities that will be here, not just when they grad, but only when they graduate from the New Brunswick school system, but hopefully they're returning from college to actually work in this building. So we want to expose them to as many things as possible and to be able to trade training programs that prepare New Brunswick students to work in this facility. Our partnership with the New Brunswick school system has spanned 20 years. I was, I was 39 years old when we built the first school for New Brunswick schools. The Lord Sterling School actually helped transform the George Street neighborhood into the vibrant neighborhood that it is today. This was the site 20 years ago. And through working with the school board and with the parents, we designed a school that really became an important community-based school. We did the cleanup that was necessary, working with New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. We relocated a couple businesses, we relocated some folks who actually lived on the site. And in September of 2002, we opened the Lord Sterling School. Working with the New Brunswick school system and the School Construction Corporation, the predecessor to the School Development Authority, we led the development of the New Brunswick High School. This 20-acre site, six-acre site, was chosen by the school board and approved by the School Construction Corporation. Devco led a team to clean up this former industrial site to a residential standard. We followed all of NJDEP's procedures. And then we also became a pilot program with NJDEP to actually do real-time analytics and real-time testing. So there was actually testing that was done on this site that we would have real-time results that we could actually make decisions in the field of actually how to best clean the site up. We participated in an extensive design program, again, with faculty, staff, school board members, students, parents, to design what we think is an extraordinary school that we're actually in today. We actually finished this building six months early, and we're allowed, and we're able to get the New Brunswick students in this building six months ahead of schedule. So we, um, so with respect to the identification of a site for a new school, we assume several factors. A, that the site needed to be located in the district that currently serves the Lincoln Annex families, that the site is sufficient to accommodate the requirements for a new school with desired programming, that it will be outlined by the school board and the administration, that the cost of the acquisition, the construction of the new school would not be borne by the school board or the taxpayers of New Brunswick, and that the costs associated with the temporary relocation of students to the Pathway Campus while a new school was being constructed would have a complete relocation package that would include the cost of transportation of students to the Pathway School, rent for the Pathway Campus, and funds that would be made available to create modification improvements to that building per the board's and the administration's directions. Our proposal that we forwarded to you, I guess, earlier this month, recommended a site at 131 Jersey Avenue. It's important to note that the city is looking to undertake two major comprehensive neighborhood redevelopment initiatives along Jersey Avenue, and that is highlighted in various colors. I can't point them out to you because I'll colorblind. The first is 112,000 square feet of medical office buildings and 102 residential units. And the second is a proposed 660-unit residential project with retail and office and a community park. The site at 131 Jersey Avenue is approximately 4.7 acres. It's three times larger than the current Lincoln Annex site. This site allows for a modern footprint, which is at least 10,000 square feet larger than the Lincoln Annex footprint. And most importantly, it allows us to build a school which is 30,000 to 40,000 square feet larger than you currently have at the Lincoln Annex, being able to accommodate a greater number of students, not only students today, but obviously as the community grows. The school will also, this site will also allow for it up to a playground, which does not exist at the Lincoln Annex, and doubles the amount of parking for faculty, staff, and visitors, parents, et cetera. This is a conceptual layout for the school, but of course, we need to begin the design process. Hopefully, that a committee of the board and members of faculty, staff, and parents will be assembled, much like we have in the past, to actually help us design the school to your needs, to the needs of the community. There are a number of environmental challenges we need to, 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 to address. This site was cleaned up to industrial standard that would allow a medical office building to be built. So what we need to do now is go back to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and take all the steps necessary to clean this site up to a residential standard, which will allow us to build a school. And then it will also allow us to, or will also have to clear all of the requirements of the New Jersey Department of Children and Family before any construction could actually begin, which is a new part of the law over the last several years. And this is theoretically what a school could look at, look like. While it hasn't been, hasn't been designed, it's, uh, it's difficult to actually put it in perspective, but this is basically the size of what the school would be. Something that's important about this site is it allows us to only build a three-story school, which is where we found it, and I think that's been your experience, that you really don't want to build schools that are larger than that, and to be able to put the important community-based functions, like a gymnasium, community rooms, auditoriums, cafeterias, and things on the ground floor, so that they're easily accessible and not having to have transport students throughout the building. Since we proposed the site to the board, the board has also asked us to evaluate a second site, which is at 50 Jersey Avenue. The site is five blocks to the east, closer to town, and the site is 400, excuse me, four and a quarter acres. If we're going to put it in perspective for you, it's next to where the Walgreens was built a number of years ago. We have conceptually laid out this site also. It allows us to get a footprint that works to build a school that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 135,000 square feet. It allows us to park approximately 120 cars. It also allows us to build a playground, which is about 10,000 to 11,000 square feet. So, um, we are anxious to work with you and assist you in actually evaluating these two sites for the school. Certainly, if you have another suggestion, I mean, I know that you have looked at a number of sites, but they work within the district, but if you do have another suggestion, we can quickly do this type of initial analysis for you. And then, once a site is selected, what we're really interested in doing is, you putting your team together, include obviously members of the board and your staff, but I assume both teachers, the faculty of the school, and parents, and to start to design the school so that we can get this process underway and get it open as soon as possible. Our goal is to do, to get this all completed within, you know, two and a half years or so. So we'd like to, we'd really like to get going. So any questions that you may have, we're certainly here, our, less of our staff is here to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Palladino. Do any board members have questions from Mr. Palladino at the moment? With that, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the January 21st meeting. Mr. General? Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevian.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. With that, item number five, the superintendent's report, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, good evening. For the month of January, we had 138 suspensions. We had four cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Our student enrollment is now at 10,329. Student attendance at 92.7%. And our certificated staff attendance is now at 94.8%. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. If we could have a motion to approve the superintendent's report, we'll move.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevian.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number six, our student representative report, Ms. Jaylene Martinez.
Thank you, Madam President. In celebration of Black History Month, our New Brunswick High School Media Center is hosting a speaker series titled "Sofa Conversations", empowering our students to do their best and acknowledging the many activists and entrepreneurs. During one session, we had the honor of having civil rights activist Rev. Caldwell to come, to talk with our students. On Valentine's Day, the Class of 2020 has spread love with our annual Valentine's flower grounds. Our students were able to send a friend or a loved one roses or a sweet treat to make their day. A section of our AP literature attended a student manning, manning of the new play "Goodnight, Nobody" at the Princeton McClair Theater Center. Those students are now working with a resident artist from Le Carter to write their own 10-minute plays. On February 21, 2020, the Class of 2021 executed their third annual Zebra Scott Tyler Variety Show, raising over $500. In third place, Jeffrey Franco Figaroza and Johann Andraka singing "Someone You Love" by Luis Capaldi on the piano. In second place, Noreli Villar sang "Mi Buen Amor" by Mon La Fuerte, which almost brought the audience to tears. And the first place winner was Francisco Cruz, who sang "Remember Me" in "El Aventurero" devoted to his mother. Also, congratulations to our seniors Tajae Moore, Bosver Pacheco, Kishan Devillah, Joyon LeBron, and Joseph Cefulo, who continue in their academic and athletic journey in football at Rutgers University, William Patterson, Mullenberg College, Delaware Valley University, and Freddie Dickinson, that was his name.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Sounds like a lot's going on here at the New Brunswick. Item number seven, the Facility Committee Report, Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Madam President. We met with, DEVCO presented their presentation at the facility meeting, which is the reason we had asked them to present to the public. I want to thank everyone for their interest of the Lincoln Addicts Initiative. There's one common denominator in this initiative, and that is providing the best education and services to our students, family, and the city of New Brunswick. As a board member, we represent the New Brunswick community. We understand the concerns of the New Brunswick community, and we will work hard to meet the community's needs. We have no alternative motive, only to work hard for the betterment of our students, which have and are producing great accomplishments with our students. We are and we will continue providing only the best education to our students, families, and make the city of New Brunswick the pride of the state of New Jersey and the United States. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. The Athletic Committee Report, Mrs. Sadowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Athletic Committee met earlier this afternoon with our new athletic director, Mr. Tom Steed. And we would also like to thank Mr. Mike Wolfall for his outstanding work as our interim supreme athletic director. Some of the highlights, we're coming to an end with our winter seasons, and believe it or not, our spring seasons are going to be starting next week. Boys' basketball presently has had 18 wins and five losses. They are seeded number two in the state in their division, and they're co-champs in the white division of the GMC. Girls' basketball did not have a success, as successful season as the venue, but we're looking forward to increasing the amount of participants and also with summer programs this summer. Wrestling, boys and girls, I'm going to get to them in a minute. Winter track was going to be, had sectionals on last Saturday. Our wrestling mat that we just recently purchased is going to be used at the state championships in Atlantic City. So the New Brunswick High School logo will be prominently seen down there. The bowling team was competitive, not too many wins, but they were competitive. We're starting JV volleyball this spring, and it will be in the red division of the GMC. We have a lot of good things to talk about with our wrestling team. And also, congratulations to Ion Brown Miller, a senior basketball player. He's also one of the captains. And he has also scored 1,500 points in his career here at New Brunswick High School. Their season is not over yet. As I said, they'll be in the state division, and that will be starting, I think it's tomorrow. Our wrestling team. This past weekend was a momentous one for the New Brunswick High School wrestling team. On the boys' side, five wrestlers, five wrestlers qualified for the region tournament, tying the school record for the most amount of qualifiers in one year. Kishan Devillah won his second district championship, becoming the first Zebra in 35 years to win two titles. Jarazel Bull and Brian Garcia placed second in their weight classes. Jaden Mahone and Zion Blanco placed third. Zion Blanco also captured his 100th career victory. All five wrestlers will be competing at the Region Five Tournament at Franklin High School this week with the opportunity to advance to the state tournament at Atlantic City. On the girls' side, the Lady Zebras had an outstanding weekend at the Girls' North Regional Tournament. Curly Borvor became New Brunswick's first region champion as she pinned through her weight at 180 pounds. Curly will be joined in Atlantic City by her teammate Donna Walker, who placed second at 215 pounds. Katie Ayala represented the Zebras valiantly, placing fourth as she came one win short of punching her ticket to Atlantic City. Joanna Ortiz placed in the top six of her weight, and Emily Reyes placed top eight. Donna and Curly will wrestle in Atlantic City in March at the state championship tournament. Congratulations to all our athletes, and we're looking forward to a very successful spring season. And that is my report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Sadowski, for that very thorough report. And I do have to say, I had the opportunity to witness the girls' wrestling match that they had not too long ago, and they are just outstanding. These girls are tough, and I'm so glad that we've made it to the state level, and I hope that, that we can bring home a new title.
Item number nine, the Curriculum and Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Seawood.
Madam President, members of the board, the curriculum and policy committee did meet last week. And in terms of the, I'll do the policy committee first. We did receive information from Strauss Esme, a model policy for tobacco-free environment. So we'll continue to review that. We need to compare it to the existing policy as well as the recommendations in terms of the vaping policy we've been working on. So as we continue to work on that, we'll bring it back for discussion. The curriculum policy, curriculum committee had a presentation from Dr. Lennox Small. He demonstrated the Discovery Education textbook that's used for the, with the social studies curriculum. And I think the other members of the committee, as well as I was very impressed with the level of training that's provided to our students in terms of how to accurately research using online curriculums. So I'm hoping the teachers, the instructional staff, students, parents, will take a look at that and really make use, practice, do those steps. And we, we reviewed requests from the instructional staff. Those resolutions are included in the consent agenda. And that's it. That's the end of our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seawood. Dr. Caldwell is out this evening, so we will not have a report from the Educational Services Commission. So I'll move on to my report. I am very happy to report that I'm just ecstatic about all the wonderful things going on in our district. I know that, like Ms. Jaylene Martinez mentioned, there were Valentine's Day dances. And you can never really underestimate the type of social and emotional learning that happens through activities like these, where our students are really given the opportunity to mingle with, with their classmates and, and just be able to form these lasting bonds. So thank you to all the educators that just provide your time to our students and nurture their, their education through this way. And I just know that a lot of us board members are looking forward to all of the other things going on in the district with Dr. Seuss's Read Across America Week happening next week. A lot of us are heading out to the schools to read to the children. And although we don't come here to the high school, a lot of the elementary schools will see our faces, and we're happy to participate in the activities. So with that being said, I'll move on to item number 12, which is the public comments portion. I know that at the last meeting, there was a bit of confusion as far as how we run this meeting. So I just want to remind that everyone here know the way that the public comments portion works is if you are interested in addressing the board, you need to let the board secretary know in advance. So if you've already signed up before today's date, Mr. General does have you on a list. Also, there was a list put out this evening, and the list was already retrieved. Everyone is expected to sit quietly and allow everyone their time to speak. This is a public comments portion of the meeting, not a Q and A. Also, the public comments portion only allows one hour for, for public comments. Seeing as how we have more than, we usually do, 33 people, and people are allowed to have five minutes during their public comments, I would like for the board to hear as many people as possible. And so if you can cut your comments short or just be very direct with your comment to allow other people a chance to speak, we would like to hear as many people as possible. And if we could get to all 33, that would be great. But again, that's if not everyone uses all of their five minutes because we only allow one hour for public comments. Mr. Hendricks?
Yes. Don't be out of order, please. The, the board meeting will, we usually limit it to an hour. That's our board policy. However, the board is inclined to extend that. And since we have 33 people signed up, we did the math, and an hour and a half might suffice if you each speak three minutes. If someone speaks five minutes, they're just taking away the opportunity of everyone to speak. We hope to hear from everyone, try to be concise and direct, and we will try and accommodate everyone that spent the time and the effort to come out here tonight. So thank you.
Also, Mr. Hendricks, I just want to remind the members of the public that are here this evening, there is no shouting, there is no chanting. Anyone that is found in violation of the board policy will be considered to be out of order. I will let you know if you are out of order. Anyone that addresses the board will address the president directly. So please direct any, any comments to the board, president, myself. And if you are found out of order, the next step is to ask you to leave. And we do have security here to be able to ask you to leave if you are not able to follow this protocol. With that being said, Mr. General, would you please call first person?
Good evening, members of board, Madam President. Tonight, we saw the presentation of two different potential sites for school construction. Can you tell me what contaminants are present at the 131 Jersey Avenue site?
I don't have a list of the contaminants at the site.
So you wouldn't know if any of them are cancer-causing carcinogens?
I would not happen to know that.
Okay. So I think that's a problem. I think that this whole scheme is putting the cart before the horse. You know, the most, the two most important words in Mr. Palladino's presentation went by very quickly. They were "or so", right? You heard him saying that we can, you know, we expect to build a new school within two and a half years, or so. And we all know, from a trip to downtown New Brunswick, that contaminated land takes time to remediate. We see that giant hole in the ground that Mr. Palladino's corporation is also in charge of developing. And that's been sitting there, you know, just accumulating liquids from time to time and not serving the community in any way for, for what is going on, four years now. And I don't want to see that happen, where the district gives up a school and then gets left, trades it for a hole in the ground that's contaminated. And I'm sure you've been to the site. I was appalled when I saw that that was the plan. It's a hole in the ground. It's contaminated. And if you can't tell me what it's contaminated with, you can't reasonably tell me how long it's going to take to clean up. And you can't build on it until it's cleaned up. So I think it's crazy to shut down a school in just a few months in exchange for a promise that you'll get one in two and a half years, or so. Because remember those two words, "or so", are going to come back to haunt you. The parents of the Red Shaw students were told something very similar when that school was torn down, and it took 10 years for them to get that school. So I'm very concerned about this. You know I've been concerned about it. I've been asking you about it at every meeting since September. And unfortunately, what we all feared is coming true, that there was a scheme that was being done behind the scenes to shut down one of the best-performing schools in New Brunswick. And you know it's one of the best-performing schools in New Brunswick. And the process was not followed. The facilities committee report never included anything about this scheme until tonight. And I also saw some video on Spanish-language television that, you know, concerned me. Can you tell me, what was the purpose of the meeting on Friday at 40 Van Dyke Avenue?
The purpose of that meeting was to inform the parents of the proposal that was received by the board.
So, so fair to say the intent was to discuss the proposal with parents? Who else was it open to? The superintendent was there. Was it open to Board of Ed members?
A couple of Board of Ed members were present.
Which ones?
Mrs. Sadowski was present, Mr. Spencer, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Spencer, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Sevilla was also there.
And you were there as well? Okay, thank you. Was the attorney there, Mr. General?
Mr. General was present. Mr. Hendricks was not.
Okay. Mr. Hendricks was there. He might have told you that you were having an illegal meeting in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act.
That was not a meeting, Mr. Radable. You're incorrect. That was a tour of the facility.
We can let the county prosecutor decide.
Oh, wonderful.
And also, the press was not allowed in? I believe the reporter who wanted to attend this was not allowed, right?
That's correct.
Okay, why?
Because this was a meeting specifically from parents.
And were those parents told that they weren't allowed to record what was said in that meeting?
Yes, they were asked not to record.
And why on earth would they not be allowed to record what their public officials were telling them about the plans for their children's schools?
It was a choice made at the meeting.
By who?
By the superintendent.
Can you please through the chair for the superintendent? Why didn't you want it to be recorded?
Five minutes.
You reached your time, Mr. Cradville.
Come on, guys, let's not do this. Why? You're out of order now, Charlie. That's it. You're not going to turn this meeting upside down like you did last time. Charlie, that's just what you're trying to do. You're out of order. If you continue, you'll be asked to leave the meeting.
Why?
You're out of order. Your time's over.
Mr. Cradville, you are out of order.
Why didn't you want it to be recorded? What did you have to hide?
Mr. Cradville, please leave the meeting. Mr. Cradville, please leave. This is maybe my answer? If the public is unable to maintain an acceptable form of decorum, I will ask to close the meeting until the public can settle down. With that being said, Mr. General, if you could please call the next person.
Linda Stork.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President. I would like to use the first couple of seconds if we could just get an answer to the question of President General.
Mr. Stork, I'll direct your questions to the superintendent.
It's a simple answer. It was just my choice.
Why?
And there's no recourse for why, why not? I just did not want to be recorded. I wanted to have a meeting with the parents, just discuss the proposal, and there's no need to be recorded. Bottom line. My position is how I felt. Thank you.
I'm not going to waste any more of my three minutes of labor in that. What I would like to know is, does the school district own the building at 40 Van Dyke? Or are we leasing the building at 40 Van Dyke? The building is currently leased. At what price?
Mr. General? The price of the lease for 40 Van Dyke, the pathways campus?
Altogether, it's about $1,050,000 a year.
So with just PTEC being there, it's severely underused, would you say? Because here's what it reminds me of. Like when they build a prison and then they have to fill the prison, it's like the cart after the horse. We've got this space that we're paying for. So to make it cost-effective, we need to get some kids in there. And otherwise, you're wasting money, right? Because why would you lease this huge space? And it also makes it all look pretty premeditated because that's a lot of space for a few students. My understanding is that even with the students that are there and then other students, the current number that Lincoln Annex is still wouldn't be filled, is that correct? Wow. So why was the decision made to pay out all this money if it wasn't known what it was going to be used for? That's a lot of money.
Do you want the history of, you know the history of the space, obviously, Mr. Stork, correct?
I know some of the history of the space. And I know some of the history of the site at Walgreens, too, which we proposed a long time ago, the Livingston School PTA, when we were asked by the superintendent at that time, well, where could we possibly, because this is an ongoing problem. Lincoln Annex is for kids that were extra kids from Lincoln School because Washington School, that's all. So there has never been enough space in our neighborhood for all the kids. And when I suggested that site, which I was familiar with, I happened to have previously lived in one of those residential units that was torn down on 30 Avenue, which were perfectly fine houses, by the way. And then the lumberyard part and then Mr. Vice President part, that the Walgreens got put on with a tax evasion. Because I was told, oh, no, we could never get that. We could never get that site. That would never be a school. But it turns out, you know, that through evidence domain, it could be a drug store with 30-year tax evasion, which came out in the paper the day that Walgreens was already opening, that the tax evasion had been proven. And yes, they made due of tax payments, but what did others buy back? The school system. So this is how we wind up not having money to do things and then having to make these kind of deals, which is supposed to sound great, but, oh, you know, they're going to build the school. That's part of it. But I don't see any guarantee if it winds up costing $55 million just to remediate the site, then the $50 million they promised us, that's bad. So I don't understand what, like, how could that possibly be to the benefit?
Thank you for coming to the microphone, Mr. Stork. Your time is expired.
Right in the neighborhood now. Because let me tell you something. It's a residential neighborhood. That is not our neighborhood.
Mr. General, if you could please call the next person?
Lilia Fernandez?
Yes, Lilia. I also want you down on the floor because I was unsure if you might change the policy again tonight. So feel free to go ahead and drop me off somewhere. Board members, some of you are saying that outside, that people outside of the school are misinforming the parents and manipulating them for their own political agenda.
What agenda?
I'm a resident homeowner and taxpayer of New Brunswick, and I know that the renters of this city are also taxpayers who pay their taxes in the rent that they pay their landlords every month. I have no agenda here. I defend the parents and children of Lincoln Annex because I stand on the side of social justice. I study and teach about the very plans that you are preparing to support and that lovely presentation that Mr. Bluey and Mr. Palladino gave us. And I have also lived through these issues personally. My grandparents came to this country over six decades ago. They were displaced, they and their children were displaced by urban mules and gentrification. They also both died of cancer. So don't try to put this as a children against cancer patients issue. My grandparents would never have been able to get treatment at RWJ because they were poor people without adequate health insurance. Is this cancer institute really going to serve the community of New Brunswick? Or is it going to serve middle and upper income people who have prior health insurance? The mayor in his video, the death of proposal, and you in your meeting with the parents on Friday keep mentioning the New Brunswick redevelopment project. Why are you promoting and championing a city development project? What does that have to do with children's education? You were hired, Mr. Superintendent, to help with the children's best interest. Board members, you were elected to represent the children and make responsible decisions on their behalf, not carrying water for the mayor or for the government developers' agendas. And the mayor is not on here, by the way. Why isn't he here? Surely, you know that Jack Morris, the board president of RWJ Hospital, is the current landlord of much of the Jersey Avenue area. And his company is the one that wants to build the apartments and offices there. Who will live in those apartments that Morris wants to build? These families? What percent will be owing from apartments? Who are going to be the real beneficiaries of all of this quote-unquote redevelopment? And let's talk about the school, as Mr. Palladino mentioned, that was built by DECO. How much did this school cost to build? $185 million. The most expensive school in the state of New Jersey's history at 30% cost overrun. And this was after cutting an originally planned swimming pool, food court, and entire league that never got built. So how can you reassure parents that $55 million will be enough to build the new schools when Red Shaw cost $68 million? And who owns 131 Jersey Avenue? How much of that money will have to be paid just for the land? How much for the environmental remediation? How on earth can you guarantee parents that it will take less than three years? Mr. Johnson, you said that you are very concerned about the ambulance traffic on Somerset Street near Lincoln Annex. Have you asked the mayor or other city leaders who attended St. Peter's how many of them were ever struck by ambulance while they attended that school over 40 years? And do you not have any concern for all the truck traffic on Jersey Avenue that poses a danger to students who will end up walking? We want to help the schools add an anti-bullying initiative. I assume you teach students not to beat each other abusively or coercively. Yet this is exactly what is happening here. Rich, powerful people are holding a little school board and humble working families so that they can get their way and fulfill their dreams of foreign expansion. And you are seemingly letting it happen. You are showing the people of New Brunswick that you do not have the courage to defend the Lincoln Annex school. You are showing no loyalty to the students or parents of this district. And all the formalities, pleasantries, and forums up on that stage will never cover up the fact that what you are doing is wrong. Stand with justice. Defend the people you are elected or paid to work for. The parents and the community say Lincoln Annex is not for sale.
Good evening. My name is Juan Gonzalez. I am a Rutgers journalism professor and a resident of New Brunswick. I am here, as many Rutgers faculty and students support parents and community residents, will pose the proposal to close Lincoln Annex. In more than 40 years as a professional journalist, I've reported on countless urban construction projects from New York to Philadelphia. But I've never seen such utter disrespect and disregard by city and school district officials toward public school parents and the residents they are supposed to represent, as I've seen the past few months here in New Brunswick. Mayor Cahill and his friends spent a year behind the scenes preparing the plans, this plan, but they never bothered to consult the people most affected. And now they insist it has to happen right away. But you, as an elected board, are the ones legally responsible for any sale. And I assure you, the pressure will only grow against this project at the least ahead, like you never imagined. I will speak to just one reason why Lincoln Annex will not close this up. No matter what DECO and Mayor Cahill said, we believe you cannot legally sell the school. When the Catholic Church sold the site in 2013 to the Board of Education, it imposed a deed restriction that requires that the land be used, and I quote, "solely for public education purposes or for other administrative purposes" for no less than 50 years. It's only been a school for three and a half years. Mr. Johnson, you told parents and the press on Friday that you don't know anything about the deed restriction. Why not? Haven't you bothered to ask your own business Mr. Smith, Mr. General? I have the deed here for the sale. Mr. General's signature was on the original deal for 2013. All you have to do is ask him. The original deed restriction for the church was even more restrictive. They lightened up a little bit. Only said 50 years for a school when they corrected it. And we have already begun to appeal to the bishop of the Tugend and ask him to intercede and not allow the sale. But even if the bishop does not agree and goes ahead to try to support the sale, the parents have already retained Latino Justice, the premier civil rights law firm in the east coast of the United States. And then tomorrow, you will all be receiving DECO, the city of New Brunswick, and RWJ letters from Latino Justice of intention to sue if you decide to go ahead with the sale. Our decision will be $55 million for a new school. But they would have to pay at least $25 to $30 million anyway to buy Lincoln Annex. So the additional money they are offering is hardly generous or adequate. Moreover, a project like this requires a detailed memorandum of the maintenance and concrete plans before any sale can be approved. I call on you to make any such documents that you get from DECO in the coming days public before any vote on the sale. Neither is to say it would be much easier and more responsible on your part to listen to the parents. They are happy with the school that they have. Only Robert Johnson, Rutgers, the mayor, and DECO will want this plan. The hospital already has plenty of land to build on. They could put the cancer center on the Ronald McDonald House right next to the school, which RWJ owns. Or if that's not big enough, they can build it on the parking garage of the children's hospital, which is RWJ's land anyway. So they have plenty of land that's adjacent to the hospital and cancer institutions for them to put their pedestrian bridges like they want. They obviously thought that Lincoln Annex is more convenient for them. They thought that this community is largely Hispanic, immigrant, and poor. The parents would be politically weak and unable to resist. Well, they thought more. The days of pushing out and pushing around in groups of people of color in New Brunswick are over. If you find over 46 that more than 85% of people should know better, find the courage to tell Mayor Cahill Find the courage to tell Mayor Cahill that Lincoln Annex is not for sale.
Well, thank you for this time today. My name is Reginald Parker. I'm a resident of New Brunswick, an alum at Rutgers, active member of the community. I do apologize today for my demeanor currently. I spent the morning in Washington DC, the afternoon in Arlington, burying a friend, a staff sergeant, LSAR Nathan Cortez Peck, a pit man, and someone that was dearly... I've cut my time breathing short. I drove four hours back here to witness your plan and the members of this community showing up in a very strong way. I am concerned with some of the items that the board's saying, including the contaminants on the properties that you've identified. Very concerned that there was a theoretical school plan and that you're still working on the design, apparently, that was set at one point. Some of them probably started working on pretty quickly. Considered the timeline. I also am concerned, speaking just members of the community or the people that are neighbors to myself, residents of the community, that are concerned about their own property that is adjacent or in the plant site. Hopefully, since your plan is moving so quickly, then you accounted for their attorneys and the time it's going to take to try to acquire land from people currently out in mind. Really, I'm mostly disappointed in what I've seen back in the summer I came to a meeting with Bob and Steve. At that point, there was no official plan to sell the school. It was hindsight, very basic. January, I think, was the beginning of the rules. I do understand those and I appreciate the ability to sign up beforehand today as I work and not close here. And I do applaud that I'm being more prepared today. It's been a rough day for me. But what I can say is this, that while driving back to Washington DC, I had a lot of time to reflect about a great democratic republic. I'm glad to see this community showing up in such a strong and forceful way. I appreciate all of you staying encouraged at your shows to speak out for your community and towards children of New Brunswick. I'll also say this, that I understand decorum, as was said earlier. Thank you all so much. But given what we've seen over the past couple months with this board, I will say that I always supported what's called Students First campaign. There's three members of the New Brunswick community that are currently advocating to get on the ballot April 21st to run for the board. We're lucky, hopefully, we can join up here and have more discussions about the community. This February 29th, Saturday, of doing the three, if you'd like to meet members of that run. We will be available at George Street Co-op or we will be at the Candy's event. I look forward to running against you very soon. I think I probably should have listened to members of the community. I wish I had more eloquence today. But for now, I'll just yield my time back to the room. Thank you.
Susan Miller.
I'm a resident of New Brunswick, about 12th Street. I sent my children to the charity school. So I'm familiar with some of the problems that arise when, because we live very near Red Shaw. I'm familiar with some of the problems that arise when tremendous numbers of school buses have to be brought in to an area that was extremely disruptive to our community when Red Shaw had died. And we were forced to contend with all the school bus traffic on our corner because so many kids were being bused to this warehouse outside of town. I also wanted to address one major problem with the presentation that we heard and a couple of ironies. Okay? First of all, there were a couple of points that we told me, Dr. what's his name? The Budi, yeah. That were disingenuous. One is, first of all, cancer is largely an environmental disease. Okay? We certainly need to find treatments for it because there are going to be people who dread it. But we can much better off cleaning up the environment than building a cancer research center. Okay, that's quite a long defense against cancer, environmental cleanup. Okay. The second thing I wanted to say was extremely disingenuous about that presentation is that Mr. The Budi presented the placement of this cancer research center here in New Brunswick as some kind of a boon to the poor people of the state. If you actually wanted to serve the poor people of the state, why don't you put it, the cancer research center, in Newark? There's already a UMD and MTA of Rutgers Medical School Installation there. You could easily put it in Newark where the population density is greater and the number of poor people is greater. This is just completely disingenuous, if not malicious. Okay? And the third thing I wanted to say is, you know, it's quite ironic that the organization that purports to be trying to create the next generation of cancer researchers out of students in New Brunswick is destroying a school where those students learn. It's not the way to create a generation of cancer researchers. Push the kids or parents and put them in a school that's far away from their homes so they have to spend time traveling to it. You keep them where they are in the school. It's already serving them well. Okay? And the fourth thing I wanted to say is putting those kids ultimately in a brown field is the ultimate irony because you're ensuring that they return to this to this cancer research institute, not as researchers, but as patients. Okay, so please, please help me. Thank you.
Alexandra Lopez Perez.
Hello and good evening, members of the board. My name is Alexandra. I'm a native of New Brunswick, Rutgers graduate student, and a Fulbright fellow. I currently serve on the Board of Commissioners for the four Bronx East, Hagean, Pacific region. But I think most importantly, for this moment in this conversation, I am an alumnus of the AC Redchuck School. My family and I moved, followed AC Redchuck from Lexington to Van Dyke. And I think some of the most compelling moments that I remember will be that I did involve the parent teacher conferences, the after school events. I was very fortunate to have a parent who could attend these meetings and events. And I can't say the same for some of my colleagues, my colleagues now. What sort of, when I reflect on, when I was a child, as an adult, one of the most, let's say, confusing comments that adults would say to me and my family was that we had a lot of grit, we christened here, we had tenacity, that my parents cared. How do we define care from parents, right? Isn't it with their attendance in school events or being able to be there with their students at school? Or is it really addressing some of the most important needs that a child has, like shelter, safety, food? When I represented America abroad, I had to think a lot about my birthplace, about my city, about New Brunswick. And I did a lot of research and I realized that New Brunswick, something that I've known as a kid, a lot of families here rent, over 80% of households rent. And the median rent for a single family household in New Brunswick is about $1,500. That would mean that over 75% of families here in New Brunswick are rent burdened. That would mean that here in New Brunswick, 40% of these families' income goes to paying rent and the taxes that go forth. I just ask from the adults, from the allies, from the teachers, from everyone, to really recognize how much the families here do care about the families that are here today. It's not that easy to be so politically active and into it or wanting to share your voice to, let's say, a community or a society that made for the science. I'm here today because 15 years ago, I wasn't here in this space where I'm sure similar conversations did happen regarding AC Redchuck School. Honestly, some of the information that I did learn was disheartening as a student, as an alumnus. But I do hope for the best. And I do hope that, you know, everybody here does recognize the efforts that families do make here and to be aware of just how systems change. It happens when you have allies to speak alongside the community, when you have co-conspirators daring the government bodies to make the decisions on our behalf. And ultimately, I'm happy to be back and I'm very proud of the students and families here. I won't go into my own personal mind, but, you know, it just... I think the move towards character education is sort of distracting, distracting to what actually creates change. And that's a lot of what you're doing here. And that makes it very comforting, as it was said. And to yield my time, I just hope that once more the interests are in families and students here. And to do remember that the situations and the conditions that you're under in the city do influence what happens within the four walls of a teacher's educational space. So keep it up. Thank you.
Yolanda Hernandez.
Buenos tardes. Yo solamente quiero agregar tres cosas. Y le pido muy amablemente a todos los miembros del board. Good evening. I would like to mention three things, and I want to thank the board. El lugar de la 131 de la Jersey definitivamente no se puede aceptar porque lo primero que tenemos que ver es la seguridad de los estudiantes. So first, 131 Jersey cannot be accepted because first we have to see the safety of our students. La otra cosa que hay que considerar y analizar muy bien es que la capital que estaba en la propuesta de 55 millones de dólares no es aceptable porque necesitamos una escuela grande, sofisticada y moderna, no una escuelita. Eso no necesitamos. And what's not acceptable either is the $55 million capital proposal because we don't need a small school. We need a sophisticated, state-of-the-art school. Y por si se les ha olvidado, todos ustedes, los intereses deben ser la educación, el bienestar, y la salud de los niños, la seguridad. Entonces tenemos que cubrir estos puntos como prioridad. Los niños no deberían de financiar su educación porque la educación es un principio que todo ser humano debe tener. I mean, first priority should be the wellness and the safety of our students. And our students should not be known to their safety. Por favor, tomen en cuenta que con la educación de los niños de una comunidad no se puede jugar. I'm just taking into account that you cannot play with education for our students. La educación es lo más importante que el ser humano recibe. Y si nosotros los ponemos en riesgo construyendo una escuela en un lugar contaminado, cada cual debe tomar la responsabilidad que te contraya esa decisión. Los niños dependen de lo que nosotros les podemos proveer. Así que, por favor, aseguremos de que los niños van a estudiar en un lugar sano donde su salud no esté en riesgo y la educación que reciba sea de calidad. Porque tenemos muchos problemas ya en el distrito y no queremos más problemas con los estudiantes. No queremos estudiantes enfermos en el futuro. So let's see five numbers. So she would like you to take into consideration that you should be of care for our students and we want the best for our students. La educación depende de cada uno de nosotros. Pero la seguridad de la escuela depende de ustedes. Gracias. So the safety and the well-being of our students depends on you. Thank you.
Maria Suarez.
Good evening. My name is Maria Juarez. I am a current resident of New Brunswick and I am a current student of the Lincoln Annex. I am extremely disappointed on the lack of transparency and respect that the word of the members has given to us parents, knowing that all this community of institutions are advocating more for my children than you are is a lack of respect to my children and to the rest of the community. I'm very, very sorry. I also find that being a New Brunswick resident and a former student of the New Brunswick Public Schools, it is my obligation to advocate for those children who do not have a voice like that from their parents. My biggest concern is transportation because, as I've mentioned before, a lot of the students, unlike what you said before, that they are located in that area is a false statement based on the students that my tribe goes with and ones I've seen there. Competition is definitely a huge issue and should be addressed. I also want to address that last week, the superintendent hosted a meeting and you bringing those points that were not correct is an insult to us as parents and to students that you should suffer. I recommend that all of you start to get to know your community because, as we are aware, you are not here for this community. So you cannot say that you know what's better for my child and say that I should have a voice because you're still going to do what is best for my child, which is not true. I also want to say to Ms. Lee that you told parents, I was present, that the microphone was last, the last time, was taken away because people weren't acting appropriately. And you don't find that your behavior toward us and how you address us is inappropriate? Because that's a concern to me. Word cancel, Mr. Lee. You say that we should be a child and care for that community. Let me clarify to you that that is not what we care. It is very upsetting, like you can see from me, that you cannot give us free answers and that you are denying us the right to talk away by talking, by taking the sign-up sheet, a policy you've now decided to enforce since you are forcing, you're facing questions and community opposition. Your board members were not acting appropriately even. Your elected officials beholden to the citizens of this city. I had comments prepared for the last meeting, like many other parents, that you brought this from. Our chance to address, you even though we sat patiently through... Our chance to address, you even thought we sat, we even though we sat patiently through all of your presentation, you are creating the situation of shouting and yelling because you refuse to let the people speak. I conclude by clarifying that my family, my child and myself and the community that I know, we're not against cancer, but it should not be something that the children should be forced to, to have to pay for because of your greed or every people who is involved in this is currently trying to do to our students. Thank you.
Ymiras Martinez? Okay, thank you. Karina Lopez? She's not present. Okay, we'll move on to Julian Lechance?
Good evening. My name is Julian Lechance. I'm currently a PhD candidate at Princeton University in the Department of Mechanical and Aerospace Engineering. And I also perform cancer research, so I believe I can offer a fairly unbiased perspective of this development. A number of my initial questions had already been answered, including the question of which contaminants are present at the proposed new location of the school. As an engineer, very disturbed by the lack of understanding, I would have hoped that a very extensive design plan would be proposed before suggesting that the students be moved to a warehouse. In addition, I also intended to bring up the leave restriction. And I do want to ask if the board has a contingency plan if the DICEs acts on this leave restriction.
That would not fall on the board. That responsibility would fall on DEFCO and Robert Wood.
Thank you. With the rest of my time, I'd like to capitalize on the presence of DEFCO and discuss a little bit about their history of gentrification in New Brunswick. For those who are not aware, in nineteen seventy-five, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the giant medical products company, partnered with Rutgers and local government to form DEFCO to redevelop dangerous neighborhoods in the city. A few years later, the historic section of New Brunswick, known as Huram Market, which was predominantly a Puerto Rican and Dominican neighborhood, was demolished in order to make way for the Hyatt Hotel. In nineteen eighty, Puerto Ricans were the largest Latino ethnic group in the city, constituting sixty-seven percent of all Latinos. And in this demolition, two-hundred-and-fifty families were displaced. So we have historical precedent here for this type of DEFCO gentrification. Did the Puerto Rican community succeed as a result of this plan? And the answer is no, they did not. The population of the Puerto Rican community substantially diminished. Anyone can access the panel of data and look at the census records to confirm that this is true. More interestingly, we can go back and look at the sort of recent articles that came out of the time when these plans were being proposed. Specifically, New York Times published an article on August thirteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, that reads almost exactly like the types of communications we are seeing today. It begins, "A much-earlier, one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar redevelopment project in this small, dipping city on the banks of the Brereton River faces melting opposition by low-income, lack-of-Hispanic residents who believe the project, known as New Brunswick Tomorrow, holds no promise for them. Proponents see the project as the foundation of the city's future and are dismayed by what they see as attempts to thwart its progress. But critics say that the community has been excluded from the project and they're alarmed by government decisions they regard as attempts to force Latin Hispanic families out of the city." And what was the number-one thing that these critics were wary of in nineteen seventy-nine, the year before this demolition? And it was the closing of the school. This was the first attack on this community. "The closing, or strong, community objections of the Bayard Street School, which is on the edge of the Huram Market, a predominantly Hispanic neighborhood that is earmarked for redevelopment in the second stage of the project." All of the pieces here are exactly the same. We have the precedent. We have the Rutgers sociology and urban development professors speaking out against this plan. We have the proponents of the project saying the same things, that it will bring jobs into the community. We have the critics saying the same things, that the voices from the community are not being considered. And again, it is the school that is being targeted first and foremost in the gentrification plan. So I know you're all very much on the spot, getting a lot of criticism from the public right now. But when you go home tonight, I please ask you to consider what you would have wanted in nineteen eighty, what you would have wanted the people in a position of authority to have done at that time. Because really, this is a problem of human dignity and I please ask you to consider the students here.
Danielle Moore?
Hi, yes, I am Danielle Moore. I have been an activist throughout the city of New Brunswick over twenty years in making it safe for our children. And what is really good for our children at this, and how you said that Lincoln Addicts is not safe. Oh, you could ask any cross-exam guard in New Brunswick, "Do I go to every zone, ask, is it okay?" And when you lied and said it wasn't safe in front of there. So Mr. Johnson, what are you, what are you doing? Oh, I'm here, I said, we're also the principal of Lincoln Addicts. Every time we try to show the evidence to our students, wow, called the whole entire police force to come at us like to we're criminals. We were harassing the people, but like I said, I will say thank you to the New Brunswick Police Department. Thank you for supporting us to where they know we're the good people. We're fighting for what we want to do, save our schools for our children. You said you deal with safety. I told you, I'm a good man. I just have a lot of people think that I work for the city, but I do it out of the goodness of my heart because I look after any child of my own. I told you, I just spent the food for six-point-four million dollars for we do Livingston Avenue. And right now, I'm telling you, at this point, please, I'm telling you and asking, please do not put these kids in danger over there on Jersey Avenue in the flood zone. This is pictures of Joyce Summer Avenue and Jersey Avenue being flooded every time it rains. The president, he cannot come clean up Mother Nature. The city has tried several times, didn't get to make sure the water will pass through. It will not pass through. You are putting them in a flood zone. So you cannot clean that up. And then another thing I will say, like I said, knowing what roads are safe. That road, Jersey Avenue, is not wide enough for the buses to even turn. That road is not available for any parking. Where would the cars park? Where would the buses park? That lot is not big enough to handle a school. So every time you have a meeting, where are the cars and the park to come? Nowhere, because there's no parking available over there on Jersey Avenue. Wow, and then you can put it next to a trucking company. Wow, funny if you come from the truck. Run this trucking company right next to it. Wow, you're talking about saving people in cancer. Wow, possibly you think you give up this family. Wow, you said you would have a park. Wow, is the park gonna be the graveyard? You said, wow, you look out, you look out the school window, what are you be looking at? Graveyard twenty-seven. And like I said, I pray you be thinking about what you're doing as well. The Lord will never forgive you for the risk you are putting with these children when you're thinking about money, not care, not safety. Due to where we all know that you got your raise on two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars and had an N-four-year contract, though, while you're having children, because you don't care. You don't receive it. You don't care. Where you said that that's not unsafe. One reason why I would say that is a very good school. Please, anyone else, St. Peter High School. Wow, top school in New Brunswick. Okay, now different stats. Now Lincoln Addict School is there. Wow, still the top school, highest test scores throughout New Jersey. They got the board, so it shows to show that that building is meant to be for a school, not for a high-rise building, seven-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars about beauty, not about safety, and everything about beauty downtown now, luxury, everything. That building doesn't even look like a hostel. So please, I hope you really think what danger you've caused to our children because like I said, it is not safe. Due to where it's extremely dark at night out of all streets throughout New Brunswick, that is one street I would never feel safe walking down. It is so jet-lad. Over twenty-five streetlights out. How could you make that into a school due to where it's so dark? Please, think about what you're doing because like I said, the Lord is watching you and I give you my word, like the city knows who I am when I say something is wrong and something to be done. And you know it must be for a reason because I always have evidence to prove what I'm speaking due to where I've been a lot. And like I said, I hope you really see, anytime you want to see any of the pictures, I always have proof to prove my case and like I said, danger flood zone there. Do not put that school there. Thank you.
Jennifer Garcia?
Good evening. Hello, my name is Jennifer Garcia. I am a very proud alum of New Brunswick. I am the class of twenty-fifteen, the first class to spend four years in this very building. With that being said, because of that, I did transfer a lot from many schools. I went from Roosevelt, a school where I was very welcome, murals everywhere, a big auditorium, a cafeteria. And then I moved to Redshaw in fourth grade and fifth grade. I remember this woman being my principal. She probably doesn't remember me because I was just a kid there. There was many kids, including Lincoln Addicts. So I can definitely testify that Lincoln Addicts has been moved. And because of that, I remember when I was eating lunch at the very rowdy cafeteria where you can hear the ventilation, see the lights dangling. It reminds me of an Amazon warehouse because I worked there. And it's not nice. It is not nice. And also with that being said, I remember some rude security guards, they would say, "Are you ready for middle school? You're just going to move right across that lifeless playground that has red dirt, patch of grass." When I was in elementary school there at Redshaw, we didn't get any jump ropes or any balls to play with. Usually the guys would bring their own softball, so obviously, there was no resources there. So when I went to the middle school, all schools were there. It was Roosevelt, Lurde Sterling, and other schools I can't remember. But I remember I had different teachers for different subjects. What the teachers would say is that, "We're preparing you for college in order for you to know how to move from a campus, from one campus to another." I think that was the wrong answer. The reason why they did that is because they wanted to fit many students in different classes. My classes had twenty-five-plus students. How did I learn? I don't know. I passed my classes. I was an average student. And also here in the high school, I was very involved. I was president of the Tri-Avon Society. I was also in the wrestling team, also in cross-country. So I really do like what that board member said, that many students are being involved, because I believe it. But I feel like New Brunswick Public Schools did do me a disservice. Because of all of my moving, I never had a very good math teacher. When I moved to the old New Brunswick High School, I was in eighth grade. And my teacher, Ms. McLeod, rest in peace, and her family, she died of cancer. And I believe that the patamon, yes, is a good idea for cancer. She might have needed it at that, at that time. But anyway, we never got a replacement for her. We were always caught by a substitute. I never learned math, so what happened? I didn't learn. So then I went to Middlesex County College, the college that actually taught me how to do math. There, I got my associates. I filled in all the gaps that I didn't learn here in the high school. And then I transferred to Rutgers. That's something that happens a lot. Many New Brunswick residents go to Middlesex County College. Why? It's cheaper. And also, they're not college-ready. And I also do want to say that I did like the presentation about the theater program or the arts program because of Mr. Thorburn and acting in plays and also being in the orchestra. They helped me advocate for myself. In addition, I got the confidence in order to join New Labor and they helped me advocate for myself. And actually, I'm a successful student. I did it all by myself with the help of my family. And if the students move, they're going to suffer. Are they ready to have the stress of moving to another school and also taking bus transportation? I remember taking bus transportation for the first time. I was upset. And my sister was in second grade. So then she cried because she didn't want to take the bus. Why? It was packed. Some students were standing. So make sure you have enough bus transportation. With that being said, our parents worked at a warehouse right behind Forty Valentine. It was called West Express. So because my parents get a job because they're undocumented, we would carpool together in the cab to get to school. And they just earned minimum wage. How do you expect people who earn minimum wage to have enough money for cabs and doing on bus transportation? Thank you.
Jared McCollum?
Good evening, board members. I'm president. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, finally, and then get to the last one. The following questions are for you, Madam President, and for any brave board member. Do you support the sale of Lincoln Addict School? On record? Do you support Lincoln Addict School being built on a contaminated location? If these were your children or grandchildren, would you support it then? I'm very fired up with the decision to displace Lincoln Addict School. And I'm fired up because of two scenarios that I believe happened. Scenario A, you all support a lie that you did not know anything about the displacement. Scenario B, the city administration made this board look like fools for not including you on any decision on the school. Both scenarios give all of you, and if I can get a raise of all the S, failing grade as elected representatives of our school. I use the word elected purposely because some of you have been on the board before it was elected. And I am aware of your allegiance to the city administration. That allegiance needs to shift to the voters that have elected you and the children that attend the schools you are entrusted to protect. I'm fired up because of your lack of action and advocacy. It has given me more reason to run for New Brunswick Board of Education with two great runways, Linda Stork and Reggie Parker, to remove three of you on April twenty-first, twenty-nine. to remove three of you on April 21st, 2020. With the help of the great people present here today and the voters that want advocates protecting our community schools. I am Jerry B. McCollum, and I don't support the sale of our community schools. And especially, if elected, will vote against a school built on contaminated soil. Thank you.
Heather Soriano.
Good evening. My name is Heather Soriano. I'm the campaign organizer for Healthy Schools now with the New Jersey Work Environment Council. I am here to support the parents and community members who object to raising the Lincoln Annex School before a new permanent school can be established. I sincerely hope that the deed restrictions that the diocese of the touch-in placed on the sale of the land that Lincoln Annex sits on will be honored. Not honoring or sidestepping that agreement will inevitably lead to additional feelings of distrust within New Brunswick if that agreement is broken. The children of New Brunswick deserve a solid, stable education. Their needs should always supersede everything else as their New Brunswick's future. I am disappointed that displacing these students and disrupting their education is even being proposed. I can almost guarantee that if a project such as this were introduced in areas like the Clinton, New Jersey, and Hurley County, it would never have ever even been seriously considered. Why do our New Brunswick students deserve less? I am deeply concerned with the health and safety of New Brunswick students if they are to be moved to a location referred to as "The Warehouse." It is my understanding that transportation will not be provided for students who live less than two miles from that location. A two-mile walk takes the average person 36 minutes. Now add implement weather, rain, sleet, snow, add excessive temperatures. What about the parents who need to walk their child to school? That's over an hour and 10 minutes per day. What impact would that have on their employment? The ability to connect with public transportation to provide for their family? Trafficking in New Brunswick is hazardous. These walking paths propose temporary school location, "The Warehouse." Do not have proper sidewalks, crossing sidewalks, lightings, yet providing transportation for all is somehow a mission? Is that an acceptable risk the board is willing to take? Ask again. Would your answers be acceptable to these questions if we were in a rural community? I think not. In addition to these concerns, let's not fail to once again mention that the proposed site of the new Robert Johnson School that they revealed will be contaminated. What are the health effects of building a school in such a contaminated area? The fact that this study is being conducted with information obtained by you as to these contaminants is grossly irresponsible. You are already stating that building a new school, from what I have read in reports, will take an estimated three or five years. I know how contaminated it can get here. I work for the New Jersey Work Environment Council. Will there be additional delays? Most likely. What if the site is even unusable? What is Plan B? The Lincoln Annex was purchased by the district for $7.4 million in capital biases. The district then spent an additional $22 million to refer to the school and open it in 2016, only four years into the 50-year deal, by the way. This is the newest school in New Brunswick, yet if you want to knock it down, displace your students indefinitely and waste $29.4 million of that money. There is simply no logic to support this plan. It is irresponsible every single moment. I understand the need for cancer treatment and research, probably more than most. I lost both parents that beat 89 and 64 years and 10 days apart to lung cancer. In fact, my father was treated at Robert Johnson Cancer Institute and received excellent care. However, he would be mortified to hear that Robert Johnson was looking to expand that treatment and research on the backs of these students and this community. That being said, please ensure that your students receive the safe, solid, and stable education that they deserve. And as board members, it is your job to ensure that they receive them. Thank you.
I just wanted to do a time check with you. What time did we start public comments?
We started at 8:12 PM. So we've gotten through 17 of the 33 people.
I think I'll allow about 30 minutes additional.
I object.
And if you can just call the next person. Thank you, Mr. General.
I have on the list here email me Oscar Maria with Maria Suarez, but you already spoke with Ms. Suarez, correct? So I have Heidi Torres. So you have Oscars here? Okay. Oscar Maria then?
Good evening, my name is Oscar Maria. Proud parent of my lady Maria, opposed to Lincoln Annex. I agree with the statements made by Paul or against Lincoln Annex itself, Lincoln Annex not herself. My child education should be your priority, like he is mine. Thank you.
Heidi Torres. Thank you, Ms. Torres. Carolina Hernandez. All right, excuse me. I'm sorry, please state your name for the record.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Francisco Valenti Baragán. Yo pertenezco a una fundación que se llama Min Sorveses.
Francisco Valenti Baragán?
Baragán.
Baragán.
Nosotros ayudamos a niños con cáncer. A persona va a tener muchos niños ayudando. Y en este hospital nosotros también tenemos a muchos enfermos.
So his organization helps children with cancer? And in his organization, they had a lot of patients with cancer.
Estamos a favor de cuidado del cáncer, pero entendemos que este problema es más que el cuidado del cáncer. Los señores están trabajando muy bien.
So we support the fact that this project is going for our cancer patients, but...
Pero ustedes y nosotros estamos un poquito... Ustedes no están trabajando bien con la comunidad, porque ustedes, el trabajo de ustedes es la educación y la seguridad de los niños.
But you're not working with the community, because your job is to watch for the safety of our students and the education of the students.
Y lo que estamos, este es lo que nosotros apoyamos. Si ustedes quieren trabajar, tenemos que apoyar. No queremos que vendan la escuela, porque es injusto que los niños los metan a un warehouse y donde ellos puedan enfermarse, por lo que se...
And we do not, we support the not selling, we do not support selling Lincoln Annex, because we feel it is unjust for students to be placed in a warehouse where they can get saved.
Si están interesados en comprar la escuela, deberían estar interesados en hacer la escuela primero antes de mover a los niños.
So if they're interested in buying the school, they should first build the school before selling.
Carolina Hernandez.
Buenas noches. Estoy aquí, pues como todos los padres, que trae el problema de la venta de la escuela.
And here on your seat against the sale of the school.
Tengo una pregunta para ustedes. ¿Por qué quieren vender la escuela Lincoln Annex que tiene tres años y medio de ser renovada?
So why do you want to sell Lincoln Annex if it only has three and a half years have been renovated?
Cuando hay escuelas viejas como Lincoln, Roosevelt, y Princeton.
There are other schools that are much older, like Roosevelt, Lincoln, and... And...
Estas escuelas necesitan ser renovadas y no pueden tirar 22 millones de dólares a la basura.
Those schools need to be renovated and we cannot throw away 22 million dollars.
Lincoln Annex es una de las mejores escuelas 12 de 12. Ella es la segunda escuela que está en esa área y ahora quieren quitar esa escuela de esa área que va desde todos esos niños que viven en esa área.
Lincoln Annex is one of the best schools in that area, the second best in the area. So what's going to happen to all those students that live in the neighborhood?
Hemos estado como desde septiembre en esta lucha. No queremos que vendan esa escuela. Es nuestra escuela, son nuestros hijos, es nuestra comunidad.
I mean, September fighting against the sale. Do not sell the school. It's our school and it's our community.
Hemos estado aquí siguiendo, luchando cada mes de la junta de educación, porque no queremos que vamos a permitir que nos desplacen de nuestra comunidad. Nosotros aportamos mucho a la ciudad de New Brunswick. Si nosotros queremos salir de la ciudad de New Brunswick o que nuestros hijos vayan a una escuela lejos, queremos que sea por nuestra voluntad, no porque nos estén sacando de ella.
So we're going to continue to fight against the sale and we're going to continue attending every more meeting every month. We do not want our students to, or our children, to be displaced. If we want them to go to a different school, it would be because we really want that, but not because they're being displaced.
El viernes pasado, que tuvimos la reunión con ustedes, nos aseguró el intendante que quería trabajar por los padres, pero lamentablemente, con el reportaje que vimos, vimos todo lo contrario y por eso estamos aquí. No vamos a estar contentos ni tranquilos hasta que cumplan su palabra.
Friday, we were so frustrated and frustrated at times, but after we saw this report, we thought that this is not happening.
Es más que un pleito. Estamos luchando por la comunidad, por nuestra familia, por nuestros hijos, por nuestra escuela.
So it's more than a fight. We're fighting for our dignity, for our families, for our children.
No, we're still being ignored. Me siento yo fundida como madre, porque he estado aquí en las otras reuniones y una persona les hizo una pregunta sobre los automóviles y ustedes dijeron que no les iban a dar transporte a los niños. Ahora, el viernes, dijeron que este era un bochínche. Este bochínche salió de aquí y nosotros nos sentimos ofendidos, porque no somos chinosos. Estamos luchando por nuestros hijos.
So we do not want to be ignored anymore. I feel offended, because in the last meeting, it was said that the buses, buses were not going to be offered. There was not going to be transportation. We were also told that we were out of order and that this was a mess. But we are not causing a mess or being out of order, because we really worry about our students, our children.
No queremos que sigan confundiendo a nuestros padres, porque lo único que hacen es dividirnos cuando deberíamos estar unidos. Nuestra dignidad, nuestra escuela, no se vende.
And please stop confusing parents. Stop confusing parents and dividing the communities. We are united and we continue to be dignified. Our school is not for sale.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. General. I just want to clarify some points, because I have heard that there was some confusion after Friday's meeting regarding transportation. If the board decides to accept the proposal, transportation would be provided to students that are currently attending Lincoln Annex School to the Pathways Campus located at 40 Van Dyke. However, once a new school is constructed, again, if we decide to go with that proposal, the school would be very close to where the parents are currently living. And so transportation, for the most part, would not be required for the students that are currently enrolled at Lincoln Annex. And I hope that that clarifies a little bit of the transportation issue.
Quiero clarificar un poco el tema del transporte. Creo que hubo un poco de confusión el viernes en la reunión que hicimos. Entonces, si la junta educativa decide seguir adelante con la propuesta que hizo el hospital, transporte sí sería ofrecido a la escuela que está localizada en la fajeta de la Van Dyke. Pero si se va con esta propuesta, tienen que tomar en cuenta que la escuela que están proponiendo construir estuviera dentro del presidario donde actualmente viven los padres de esta escuela.
Mr. General, next person, please.
We are out of order.
Mr. General, next person, please.
Diego Osorio.
I'm a 4th grade Lincoln Annex student. I want to point out that one fact about the new school being built is that it's next to the graveyard and the ground is contaminated, in which it will take very long time to clean out the ground, because we don't know what chemicals the rock has inside of it. And Lincoln Annex School, I've heard many times that many children have one of the highest grades in that school. So why would you want to relocate the children to a different school where they might not feel comfortable in? And I've also heard from many people that the children in schools right now are the future of New Brunswick. Why? Why would you want to relocate the future of New Brunswick in some place that would not feel comfortable to them?
Candid Osorio.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. My name is Candido.
Uh, my name is Candido, um, uh, members of this community. I'm living in New Brunswick, resident of New Brunswick for twenty years. And every year, uh, I pay my taxes and I believe that tax is what I have to pay so to your pocket. So that gives me a right to stand here to support the education of my kids, my community and anybody else. Now, uh, I want to ask a question, very, very simple but very clear to Mr. Johnson. I believe you are here to, to work for the community, for the students, for the education. Now, my question is, what side you standing? You standing for the community, for the kids, for the education? Or you standing for big corporations and politicians and the community? I need an answer.
Sir, any questions directed to the board need to, need to be directed to me directly and I will not defer that question to Dr. Johnson.
Oh, wow, that's incredible, but, okay. My question was because I believe if you are not, uh, you are not here for the education of my kids and all these kids, you are not being allowed to sit in that seat. If you do not have the people you are around, you have to get out of that seat. To make somebody use and to give a right to the education. Because these kids, they are the future. And this is really, really made me upset because I believe every single person, he will do anything is possible to have at their hands what they need. And what I mean, I will do anything, anything beyond my hands to support, to do the best for my kids. And as Juan González say before, we prepared myself to fight with the lawyers legally, that's not gonna be easy. I don't think you guys are gonna go through to this. So we chose, we like, we wanna let you guys know it because we're gonna continue fighting for this. And like we, like everybody say, Lincoln Annex, our education is not for sale.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es María Chiquito. Soy miembro de la comunidad y madre de Diana Solis, que es mi hija que está en Lincoln Annex y estaba muy orgullosa de tener a una persona con el mismo nombre como miembro del consejo.
So my name is María Chiquita and my daughter's name is Diana Solis and I was very proud to have my daughter's name named after my president.
Pero ahora ella está muy decepcionada de ver lo que está pasando con su escuela.
But tonight she is very disappointed to see what's happening with her school.
Yo estoy confundida porque desde septiembre ustedes se han ido contradiciendo una y otra vez.
I am very confused because since September you have contradicted yourselves.
Como ejemplo, el día de hoy, cuando se mencionó sobre la reunión del viernes, uno de ustedes miembros del consejo dijo que no fue una reunión sino un tour y la presidenta dijo que sí fue una reunión. Entonces, ¿cómo esperan que nosotros sigamos confiando en ustedes cuando ustedes mismos se contradicen?
For example, on Friday's, uh, meeting, uh, it was said that it was not a meeting, it was a tour. However, then, um, the president stated that it was a meeting. So how can we believe in you if you continue to contradict yourselves?
Quiero decir que no estamos en contra del Instituto de Cáncer, sino estamos en contra de que se cuide con la educación de nuestros hijos.
So I want to say that we are not against, uh, the building of a research, a cancer research center, but we're against, uh, everybody playing, um, with the education of our children.
Tengo una pregunta para la presidenta porque sé que los demás no van a poder responder. Especialmente para usted, me gustaría que por un momento se olvidara que es la presidenta del consejo, cerrara los ojos y se pusiera por un segundo en los zapatos de cada uno de los padres que estamos aquí.
I have a question for the president and I would like her to close her eyes and for a minute to forget that she is the president of the board and, uh, to be in our shoes.
Quiero que imagine que vive en el área donde está Lincoln Annex, que tiene que ir a trabajar desde muy temprano y que su hija tiene que caminar hacia la escuela. Una escuela que va a quedar localizada en cuarenta Jersey Avenue.
I want you to imagine that you live in the Lincoln Annex area, that you work and you go to work very early and that your daughter has to walk to school that's going to be located at forty, uh, Jersey Street.
Quiero que la imagine caminando por esas calles.
Forty Van Dyke, I'm sorry.
Quiero que la imagine caminando por esas calles teniendo que cruzar French Street y teniendo que caminar sobre Jersey Avenue donde hay muchos camiones pasando a altas velocidades.
And I want you to imagine her walking over, uh, along French, uh, Street and Jersey Avenue where there are large trucks and a very, um...
Heavy trucks.
Heavy trucks.
Ahora que se ha puesto nuestros zapatos, ¿usted mandaría a su hija a cuarenta Jersey Avenue?
So would you send your, your own daughter to forty Van Dyke if you are in our shoes?
So for the record, I am a parent of a child at Lincoln Annex School. Myself and another board member has a child enrolled at Lincoln Annex School. And if the board decides to go with this proposal, transportation would be, would be offered to students who are currently enrolled to attend the Pathway Site located at forty Van Dyke.
You have a car.
¿Eso va a ser para los setecientos cincuenta alumnos o solo para alumno?
Is that going to be for the seven fifty students or just for the few?
All seven hundred sixty students.
Okay, quiero que recuerden que la mayoría de los padres con hijos en Lincoln Annex tienen que mandar a sus hijos caminando, pero si la escuela va a estar lejos van a tener que pagar un ride. Eso significa treinta dólares a la semana y si tienen tres hijos sería noventa dólares a la semana.
So I just want you to remember that parents, uh, who have to send their children to school to forty Van Dyke, they would have to wait, to walk or they would have to pay a ride for thirty dollars a week per child which will mean ninety dollars, uh, per week if they have three children.
Gracias y Lincoln Annex no está en venta.
Mr. General, this is going to be our last person to choose call from your list.
Sherry Wolf.
You know, General, I, I sent you an email today and you put me on the list. Did you inform me that I wouldn't be able to speak? That is bullshit. That is bullshit. Bullshit.
Security, please remove that gentleman. Remove him from the meeting cursing at a public meeting. That's a crime. Sir, please.
Yeah, that's why these people shut up. Lock those people up. Lock those people up.
Sir, you are also out of order.
Let the people speak. What's your response to that?
Sir, you are out of order.
Remove him from the meeting, please.
Miss, excuse me. Again, we expect proper decorum at this meeting. Mr. General, if you could please call the last person. And this is a reminder, if you are unable to keep proper decorum during this meeting, we will adjourn and after you are able to calm down, then we will come back out. So, Mr. General, please call the last person.
Shame on you.
I'm Mr. Wolf, without the voting in the ready room, thank you.
My name is Sherry Wolf. I'm the senior organizer for the Rutgers Faculty Union, A, A, A F T. We represent eight thousand five hundred professors and graduate employees at the State University of New Jersey. I'm speaking here not to reiterate things that are said...
Come on, man, let's go. No, ain't no, no, no damn hold on, let's go. Look, you wanna go too?
No, sir, I already...
All right, then, hold it, you just be quiet. Shut your mouth, man, just we handle this.
The central reason we were threatening to strike and the reason we wound up not striking is because we won on the issue of race and gender equity. And what we won was twenty million dollars from the university to diversify our faculty and create a culture that would maintain Latino and Black faculty at a rate much higher than it currently is. There is no way that our members who live and work here will tolerate what we understand to be politely speaking displacement and what is more accurately understood to be racist gentrification. Are our future students. We have skin in this game. We pay taxes here, we live and work here and at levels much higher than the rest of the American population, we vote here. Here, please, and we work in partnership with the other fourteen thousand unionized employees at the State University. And I am going to make you a promise. We will do everything in our power as a union. We all built resources to help organize politically and on the ground the community in solidarity to stop this destruction of a growing school, to stop the racist displacement of a Latino community under the pretext of Cancer Institute. We have no beef with the Cancer Institute. We do have a beef with racism, we do have a beef with gentrification, we do have a beef with lying, we do have a beef with people saying they are doing something in the best interest of children and then ignoring the children and their families. And the performance earlier of throwing people out who simply want to speak is precisely the kind of arrogance that is going to weigh you even greater opposition. One of the old saying in the labor movement, "The boss is the best organizer." And what is meant by that is that people who show contempt and arrogance who are in positions of power only engender greater resistance and solidarity among those people who have less power. And that's the truth, you are right. If you don't approve and I personally as an organizer will thank you on some level. You are helping us organize our troops. But on a TQ level, I do not thank you because what you are doing here is furthering down the road a displacement of a population that is already eighty-six percent economically disadvantaged, ninety-six percent, ninety-four percent Latino. We won't tolerate it, we won't stand for it and we are in complete and thorough one-hundred percent solidarity with the Lincoln Annex families who want to stop the sale and stop the destruction of this school.
Mr. General, with that, we will conclude the public comments portion of our meeting and I would like to...
By disenfranchising people.
To item number thirteen, the consent agenda items.
Shameful, absolutely shameful.
Excuse me, sir, you are out of order.
This is two meetings in a row now. If you can't take the heat, resign. Resign!
I'd like a motion to go into temporary adjournment.
Shame on you!
Very Trump-like.
Olive paper? Temporary adjournment is not received.
Get out of here and don't come back! She is graceful, guys.
I'd like to resume the public portion of, of our meeting for this evening and I would like to have a motion picking up right where we left off on the consent agenda items, resolutions A through V. If I could have a motion for those, please.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Does she try to?
Yes, I abstained on item L.
So noted. Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number fourteen, the finance committee report. Doctor Dale Caldwell is not here this evening. Is someone going to request a motion to approve the finance?
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Shakitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer. So noted. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, I'm staying on five, eight, five, six and eighteen.
So noted. Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. General. Uh, yes, Mr. Spencer?
I move the adoption of a resolution authorizing the preparation and filing of an update to District's Long Range Facility Plan that will recommend the replacement of the current Lincoln Annex School with a new school to be constructed on a different site. The site acquisition, that site acquisition and school construction to be paid for as part of the Rutgers Cancer Institution of the New Jersey Expansion Project and for the temporary use of the Pathways Campus during the period the new school is being constructed. The board authorizes the members of this facility committee to one, meet with parents from the Lincoln Annex School, appropriate staff members from the, from, from the Brunson Public School and professionals and Devcom to review the potential sites for the location of the replacing school, including one thirty-one Jersey Avenue and fifty Jersey Avenue and to select the replacement site for inclusion in the Long Range Facilities Plan. Once the facility, facility, once, once the facilities committee has selected the site, they will continue to work with the same working group in the planning and design of the new school.
Second. Why wasn't this on your agenda?
Roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Mrs. Shakitis.
Abstained.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mr. General, and we will change the order slightly on the meeting seeing as how we had a temporary adjournment. We had the opportunity to discuss... We had the opportunity to discuss item number sixteen, the personnel committee report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, personnel committee, um, reached consensus, consensus in a process and I need a motion to accept personnel report as amended.
So moved.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Shakitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. And now, we just need a motion to adjourn this meeting? So moved.
Second.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Shakitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.